Good evening and welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting of November 29.
I can't hear you. Let's try it again, maybe.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting for November 29. We'll start with a roll call.
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and we are going to have a proclamation for World AIDS Day in a moment, and then we're going to follow that with two administrative reports, one from the Human Rights Commission and one from Community-Minded Enterprises. So we'll start out with the proclamation. Councilmember Betsy Wilkerson is going to read it, and we are joined by Grant O'Grann, who will speak once the proclamation has been read. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Council President. Whereas this year marks 40 years since the first five cases of what later became known as AIDS were officially reported, and we honor more than 36 million people globally who have died from AIDS-related illnesses since the start of the epidemic. And whereas we recognize that a strong commitment to ending HIV epidemic globally means addressing health inequities and ensuring the voices of people with HIV are central in all of our work. And we likewise recognize that despite the many hard-won gains over the last 40 years, HIV remains a threat domestically and globally. And whereas, informed by the voices from the most impacted communities, we remain deeply committed to ensuring equity in programs, research, and policies, and serving those most in need of support. And we hereby renew our commitment to do our part to end the HIV epidemic in Spokane and around the world. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2021 as World AIDS Day in Spokane and ask citizens in our community to join me in pledging to help end this epidemic in our lifetime. Grant, I'll turn it over to you.
And I don't see it. He was on. Okay. Grant, welcome back to City Council. If you want to say if it works.
Thank you. Like, we use WebEx for our platforms, and for some reason, nothing's working for me today. Thank you so much for reading the proclamation and for everything that the City Council does. I'm the Executive Director of Spokane AIDS Network. I was previously the President of Spokane AIDS Network for about seven years, and I've been in the ED position now for two years. We are always concentrating on making life better for our community. That is what we're all about. World AIDS Day, this year's theme is ending the HIV epidemic, equitable access, everyone's voice. That last part, to me, is very important. We're in talks right now with the Department of Health on looking at the way the wording is done for a few of the laws that are out there around HIV. And we have a group of people that are working with us, with the Department of Health, to make sure that those laws incorporate everybody and don't discriminate. In the past, the wording hasn't been suitable. They were written quite a few years ago, so that is one of our key projects that we're working on right now. Wednesday is World AIDS Day, and we will be showcasing two blocks of the AIDS Memorial Quilt between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. at the Washington Cracker Company Building. And we'll have some speakers, City Council President included, and a few voices of HIV. To me, that is the most important thing, is to hear from people that are affected and to show that quilt. The quilt has a very strong meaning for me this year. A couple of the panels were made back in the '90s for a little girl named Cara Claypool, and she went to, I think, Willard Elementary School. So Willard Elementary School put a panel together for her, and her family and friends did as well. I didn't know that this panel was available until about four months ago, when I started researching. She was my client back in the '90s, when she was going through her HIV treatment and when we lost her to AIDS. So it has a very different meaning for me this year in bringing these quilts to Spokane, and we will actually hopefully have her brother there to speak as well. So I'm working on that. But thank you all for your support. I really appreciate it. I know our community appreciates that as well.
Thank you for coming tonight, Grant, and for all the work your organization does, if you do, and look forward to seeing you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
So now, we're going to, we periodically get an administrative report from the City of Spokane Human Rights Commission, and we have our Commission Chair Lance Kissler here with some other folks. And I've asked them to spend up to 10 minutes to talk about their work on the Office of Civil Rights proposal that they recently sent us. So Lance, I'll leave it to you to manage the time however you want with your folks.
Will do. Thank you, Council President Beggs. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay. So thank you for having us today. On behalf of the Human Rights Commission, we appreciate council's support. And just as a note to everyone, we do serve as an advisory group to City Council with the creation of the position that Drell Haynes is in. We are really looking forward to further expanding our relationship with the city administration, the mayor's office, and of course, taking a more proactive role with the city when it comes to human rights. Part of that is looking at establishing an Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion, and that's why we're here today. So a little bit of background and history, and then I will be turning it over to my colleagues who are also speaking today, various members of workgroups, task forces, and others who have come together to make all this work possible. And I'll let each one of them introduce themselves when they speak to their section. So the Office of Civil Rights Task Force was established back in 2019 by the Human Rights Commission, when the Commission saw a very apparent need for an office of such to be established at the city. We created this task force to have a representation across our community. It's had anywhere from about 10 members, sometimes a little bit less, sometimes a little bit more, all based upon people changing roles in the pandemic. We met a number of times over the past two years, mostly via Zoom. I think we only had one meeting in person before the pandemic hit. But we have representatives from the Commission, the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force, Gonzaga University, specifically their Institute for Hate Studies, the Spokane NAACP, Tools for Change, Center for Justice, Community Building Foundation, CIMBA, INBA, various faith groups, and other racial, ethnic, minority, and cultural community groups as well. So a broad spectrum throughout our community here. We collaborated with the Gonzaga Institute for Hate Studies to develop the Glory Benchmark Study during 2020, which was presented to council back in 2021, when we gave our interim update, and shared some core themes that were ascertained from that work. And then the task force collaborated with the Greater Spokane Progress Work Group over this past year or so, and we formally adopted their proposal for consideration by the Commission, which is greatly based upon a model that was developed at Des Moines, which was part of the research that came through with the Glory Benchmark Study. At our last meeting in November, the Human Rights Commission accepted that proposal from the task force and issued our resolution to city leadership, which you all should have received a copy of, as well as a copy of that report. So now I'm going to turn it over to Poyeon Lam, who is with Greater Spokane Progress, who will talk a bit about the background and history that they have. Poyeon?
Okay. So the Coalition of Organizations under Greater Spokane Progress has been working on the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion proposal for a few years now. It started back in 2018, when we were working on the Spokane Progress Plan to identify policy priorities with the Coalition of Organizations that are part of Greater Spokane Progress. And we quickly realized that for a lot of the issues that we were trying to address, we not only need to have an Office of Civil Rights, but also we need to have an office that is multifaceted and tackle some of the problems and its root causes. And so we realized that this work has to be extended beyond just the writing of the Spokane Progress Plan, and we created a work group specifically to work on the idea and the proposal. And even though the discussion started with concerns from communities of color and also immigrant communities, we realized that the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion would also, should also serve different marginalized communities. And so we are very intentional in terms of reaching out to a wide spectrum of organizations. As council members have seen in the sign-on letters, that there are 50-plus organizations representing different communities, different marginalized groups. They have, you know, given us feedback. Different groups have given us feedbacks over time. They have looked at different versions of our proposal, of our models. And when we realized that the Spokane Human Rights Commission is also working on the creation of an Office of Civil Rights, we reached out to them and wanted to see how we can collaborate together, because we know that they are also trying to look at different models, and reach out to communities, to see what would best serve the needs of our specific Spokane communities. And so with conversations with the task force, we have also presented different versions of the models and proposals to the Spokane Human Rights Commission and get feedback from them, that the result of all that work over the years is the proposal that City Council members have been shared and the framework that we have worked on for years now.
Curtis?
Lance, could you go to another? We're trying to figure that out. Oh, never mind. He's there. No, he's there. Got it.
Yeah, they muted me and cut my camera off. I'm like, okay, this is going to be fun. All right, so, yeah, Curtis Robinson, part of the task force, serves as immediate president, pastor of the Spokane NAACP branch. So, and also is Executive Director for I Did the Time. So when we were working on this, you know, this part is about really demonstrating the need, right? So in 2018, the World Atlas listed Washington as number two in the U.S. with 666 reported hate crime offenses. In 2020, law enforcement agencies also reported a total of 451 hate crimes, 299, which were race and ethnic and ancestry-oriented. And then in 2019, well, that was in 2019, and then we had 511 reported hate crimes. So also, according to the FBI, the U.S. had the most hate crimes in its history since 2001. Reports of hate crimes against API increased 76% over the pandemic, and Washington State now has a population ranking, according to 2020 Census, of number 13. Yet we were listed as number eight in hate crime groups in 2018. And, but we're now listed as number 17 for that, for the amount of hate crime groups that we have per capita. The links are in there. Many victims, and it's important to understand that many of our victims, and this is where the NAACP comes in this, I'm going to get to that in the next slide, is that many, many of our victims of these kinds of crimes and these kinds of offenses, which tie directly into civil rights issues, do not report it. And we do not report it for a reason, because, hey, we're not getting, there's been no vehicle for that. There hasn't been representation for dealing with that, and we don't get a lot of support from law enforcement agencies, as well as the justice system. Next slide, please. So what the NAACP did with this task force is we submitted a report that had over 131 separate complaints from 2019 through 2020. 87% of them were persons of color, 55%, were, over 55% were female, over 40% were male, under 5% were LGBTQ+. And that did not include the ranging of the 60-plus letters that we had in that same time window from our incarcerated institutions here locally. The important thing about this, and this demonstrates to me, is because the NAACP is not a legal organization, it is an advocacy organization. Yet we have been the ones fielding, and organizations like us have been fielding the weight of these kinds of issues manifesting in our communities of color. And an important thing to also really kind of understand here is that right now, and you can see the link in the bottom section of this slide, is that when you try to look up civil rights issues and complaints and history and data, there really isn't any, at least not as very easy or even semi-easily to find. And I'm pretty computer savvy. So it's important to note that the whole, this whole thing has been happening here for a while. One of the reasons that this office, exploratory office, came into being were because of the history of racial issues, such as the slurs at MLK Center, the postings at Morningstar, the damage at the DiBali Asian Bistro, the funding of the downtown Black Lives Matter mural, and last year, the defacing of Best Shalom, as well as so many others, because any real history can see that this has been going on over here for a long time, with zero accountability. And I pass.
Poyeon, do you want to talk a little about the research from GSP? You're muted, Poyeon.
So the research that has been done by GSP started, again, from the very early on with the discussion on the Spokane Progress Plan. And at that time, Cam Swisser, an attorney from Center for Justice, was doing research on hate incidents and crimes in a Spokane area and trying to look at how those incidents are reported. And through that research, she also has looked at different cities in terms of what their Office of Civil Rights are doing in this regard and how they're handling these cases, collecting statistics. And so from there, we looked at, you know, for example, Eugene as a model. We also drew the connections that GSP has with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity to look at different cities, for example, with Austin, Texas. And so, and also with input from different organizations that have been part of the work groups and others in conversations about what their communities would need and how to get their members of the communities to be more engaged, that they would build more trust with a city. So if issues come up, they're more likely to report it or to work with the city to tackle it. And so with all this research, this is how we come up with the multifaceted model that we're forming areas of work that the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion should tackle. And also, under the Spokane Human Rights Commission Office of Civil Rights and Task Force, that they have also looked at the data that Curtis mentioned from the NAACP Spokane Complaints, and also that members of the task force have looked into the history of Office of Civil Rights in Spokane, which once existed, and also the very helpful Glory Benchmark Report done by Dr. Christine Hoover from Gonzaga University. Next slide, please. And so in Dr. Christine Hoover's report, what she looked at is a few cities that are of similar size as Spokane. And so she looked at Boise, Idaho, Des Moines, Iowa, Madison, Wisconsin, and also looked at different cities in the Pacific Northwest area, including Portland, Seattle, and Tacoma. Next slide, please. And one of the things that really, you know, helped me think of the path of creating an Office of Civil Rights Equity Inclusion in Spokane differently is the numbers that she presented in this table. I think, you know, for a lot of us, you know, what we think this is, this is a huge ask. This is a monumental task in terms of investment. But when she broke down the numbers in terms of per capita investment into a city's population, it makes me realize that we're not talking about a huge investment with something so important, with an office that can make such a difference. It's really, you know, if you look at what Des Moines, Iowa has invested, we are talking about, you know, under $4 per person in the city. And so I think this make us, you know, realize that, you know, this is something doable. We're not comparing large cities that have invested a lot of money because their population warrants it. But we are looking at Des Moines, Iowa, that has a similar population and is similar in Spokane in other ways, and it is really something that is achievable. But at the same time, we have a tremendous return of investment to the few dollars per capita that we will be investing in. Next slide, please. And so this is the framework that is the proposed model that the GSP workgroup come up with, but also have been getting feedback from different groups, including the Spokane Human Rights Commission, OCR Task Force. And so we realize the urgency of having the staff to take complaints and to investigate the cases that have been brought forward, as Curtis mentioned. So this is a huge amount of work, and that needs to be done immediately. But when a complaint is being brought forward, it means that someone is already hurt. A community is already hurt, and also people's livelihood. If we are talking about employment or people's well-being in terms of housing, it's already, has already been negatively affected. And that's why we think it is very important to have an Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion that also takes a proactive approach in terms of educating our community, educating businesses, educating agencies, so that we will do things right in the first place to minimize the complaints that are needed to be brought forward. And also, a lot of times, people like Curtis mentioned, they might not even bring complaints forward. For example, with immigrant communities, they might not know, they might not understand how things work. They don't know whom to contact, whom to reach out to, and also with language barriers. And so I think for a city, we really also need to be very proactive in educating different communities with resources in different languages so that people understand that the city will support them when they experience discrimination, when hate crimes happen, and they know that what their rights are here, protected by the City of Spokane. Next slide, please. And so we look at the Glory Benchmark Report, because Dr. Christine Hoover has done such an amazing job. And also, some of the things that she finds really correspond with what we are saying, pretty much, we need an office that has to have multiple staff and also would have to cover, you know, these kind of main areas of work. Like I talked about, you know, we're not just taking complaints, but also doing investigations, but also doing education, doing community outreach, and also routinely to look at our city, our different agencies, to look at where they are in terms of equity and inclusion. And so we are just trying to come up with a realistic budget of what it would be like for Spokane and the scale of the office for Spokane. And so we use Des Moines, Iowa as a model, and we use the $3.34% per capita funding level and extrapolates into the budget that we put into our proposal with six full-time positions. And so even if we adjust, you know, for the larger, slightly larger population in Spokane and the higher cost of living in Spokane, it really is only about 0.1% of the city budget that we are asking for with the vision that the community have put forward. And so I think, again, you know, I, my mind was changed when I looked at the Glory Reports. And so, and to really, you know, like, make us think that we are making a very modest, a very humble request here. And that is going to be a tremendous first step for Spokane to move forward to be a city that's really known for its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Dr. Lam, I'd like to just add in there that also justice, because that's what our people are looking for. You know, that's what we need, is we need racial and economic justice.
Thank you for adding back, Curtis.
Thank you, Poyeon and Curtis. Next, Drell is going to, Drell Haynes is going to speak to how this can be operationalized and the work that he's doing in his role. Drell?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you, City Council President and City Council Members, for allowing us to come and speak before you this evening. My name is Drell Haynes, and this is the first time I actually get to be in front of you all in my new role as the Civil Rights Coordinator here for the City of Spokane. It's been absolutely, an absolute honor to work with alongside Lance and Poyeon and Curtis and Greater Spokane Progress, the Human Rights Commission, and the OCR Task Force over the last few months. You know, my job is to develop and operationalize exactly what this could look like, to take the resources that City Council and, in partnership with the administration, provide us so that we can imagine exactly what an Office of Civil Rights and a position like mine can look like here in the City of Spokane to not only best support our community members and our community organizations, but also best, you know, support our city government and help protect us and prevent, you know, civil rights violations from ever occurring in the first place. So like I mentioned, part of my role is to also educate staff members and community members around what their civil rights are, around Title 18 and now newly Title VI and IX as well. But, yeah, I'm just really excited to be having these conversations, and I look forward to all of us being able to sit down together and be able to dream a model that's ideal for the City of Spokane.
Thank you, Drell. So to wrap it up, next steps that we see is to allocate funding for the fiscal year '22 to begin the process of creating an Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. We have proposed the 0.1%, and there's the specific dollar amount in the proposal that went forward to City Council as a starting point, ensuring that Mr. Drell Haynes, our Civil Rights Officer and Coordinator, is provided with the resources and support needed to develop that office, utilize the GSP model, so the Des Moines model, as a blueprint. So the important word there is blueprint for operationalizing an office here in Spokane, including its role, its responsibility, the funding, resources, and so on, aiming for that 0.1% of our total budget. We believe that the office that serves the city, and eventually, hopefully, the county and our region, has appropriate oversight, it has the ability to enact change and operate in a nonpartisan manner very effectively, and has a seat at the decision-making table. At this time, we stand ready for any questions that council members may have. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Lance and company. Any council members have questions? Councilmember Mum?
Just real briefly, some of that data that was very interesting, and thank you so much for presenting it. It's really important that we understand what's happening in our community. And when you see the data, it's pretty shocking. Is that just for the municipality of Spokane? municipality of Spokane, or is that all inclusive of Spokane County? Does anyone know?
I, I would say that, so the complaints that the NAACP receives is probably, um, Spokane County and perhaps beyond. Uh, Curtis, do you want to?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And, and thank you, Council, and, and thank you, Lance. Yeah, so they are, they are, they are Spokane-wide, right? So Spokane County-wide. Um, and again, that was just the, that was just a slice. That was just a sliced period from beginning of twenty nineteen to, uh, January of twenty nineteen to July of, uh, twenty twenty. Um, and so that, that was just a picture of the stuff that we're dealing with. But I also want to add that other context too, is that that report is just, you know, uh, things that came in by email, phone calls, and whatnot, but that also did not include the stuff that we've gotten from the prison systems here locally as well. And so that is still rolling through today. It's been rolling through the entire time, and it's been on the shoulders of volunteers, uh, to deal with systemic issues.
So I hope you take this message to, um, our friends in Spokane Valley, and I hope you take it to our county commissioners as well. I think this full report should be done at their legislative sessions as well. It's that important. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stratten?
I just wanted to add a thought or two. When I started at the city in two thousand and five, we did have an Office of Human Rights. And one of the big problems was, what we had is, we had one person. And that person was constantly running around trying to get assistance from other organizations, including the Washington State Human Rights Commission. So as we go through this process, which I am completely supportive of, we really need to hold tight to the idea that there needs to be staffing. We need to have people, um, that can hit the ground, that can take those complaints. We need to have some, um, enforcement is a big deal, and how do you, how do you process complaints and then follow it up with enforcement? Um, this is, I appreciate your efforts so much because I can remember, I'm going back to the frustrations in the early two thousands, that you would see things and people would talk to you, and you had absolutely, really yourself, that, that one staff person that could, um, try and help. But I, I think we really need to, if we're going to do this, we do it right, and we, um, we push for those positions because you can really make a difference when you have people paying attention to those, um, um, some of the nuances and some of the particulars of that. So I appreciate this work very, very much. And if there's anything I can do to help, I'm sure we're all available to help. Thanks.
All right. Well, again, thank you all for all your work and for, to all the other people who contributed to it. Um, let's now go to our other administrative report. And we have Lee Williams from Community Minded Enterprises giving us a report. And Lee, welcome. I saw some news that you're retiring after many great years of service. We, we thank you for all that service and congratulate you, uh, on this milestone. But what do you have for us tonight?
Well, um, thank you. Uh, first want to thank, uh, thank you, uh, Council President Beggs and the City Council for inviting us here this evening to give a presentation. Um, it's my pleasure to lead the presentation, and I have some colleagues with me, um, Deshawn Bedford and Michael Bethley, who are the staff members for the CMTV programming. And, uh, our administrative staff, Nancy Rust is our CFO, and Sarah Decatell is our philanthropy officer. And we work as a team to support the station and help it to move forward. Our mission for Community Minded is to advance the quality of life for all the people in Spokane and across the state of Washington, especially for those who may lack the resources and are historically marginalized. So I really appreciated listening to the previous presentation. I think it really tells us a lot about where our community is as far as, um, advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion and, and the road that we have to travel. Um, hopefully, um, equipment and vision of CMTV can help move some of that along as well. Uh, we look forward to that. Um, I did, uh, give a PowerPoint presentation to kind of help guide our presentation to Hannah Lee to put up for us. Excuse me, all of a sudden I have this frog, and it's really inconvenient.
She's hoping, Hannah Lee's hoping you will share it.
Oh, that I will share it? Oh, my goodness. I, okay. If you, oh, well, hang on a minute. I will pull it up. I wasn't tuning on that, so it's going to take me a second.
Hold up, I can share it for you.
Oh, can you?
Um, as long as I have, can I have permission to share?
Can Shar Ladyman have permission to share?
Working on it.
Okay.
Did you get that, Hannah? Shar should have it now. There she goes.
Okay, we'll start out with the video, and then we'll get into our, our, uh, presentation.
Can't hear it, Shar. Yeah, we're not hearing the sound, Shar, but there might not be anything you can do about that.
It's just music, so you're only missing the musical accompaniment.
Okay, great.
Okay. Oh, Shar, that, oh, there we go. So really, the, the mission of Community Minded TV is making digital media and video production accessible. Um, I think, uh, it started back in two thousand and seven with a vision from Community Minded that was dedicated to providing community programming and making digital media available for everybody. Um, here's some of the ways that we've been dedicated to serving, giving voice to the voiceless and serving the underserved are really two of our top reasons for providing this service, making digital media accessible to the public, and bridging the, the digital divide. And most especially, especially during the not the pandemic, supporting area nonprofits in their missions that they have in serving the community. So Deshawn and Michael speak just a little bit to some of the programming on the station that's local and national. You can stop it there, Shar.
Uh, so one of our biggest missions for our public access television is to try to have the majority of it be local programming and stuff. So a lot of like music videos, um, art shows, whatever type of, uh, uh, events that are happening here in town, we definitely try to figure out a way to be a part of them or get loan out cameras for people to go film those so they can bring them back to Community Minded Television. And so much for like Catholic Mass and the Valley Council and stuff. And so, um, we just try our best to, to really try to stay local. I think right now we're probably about between fifty and sixty percent local programming. Um, we do have some national shows that we do air. Um, the people in community really do like those shows, and we know this because if we don't play them, we definitely get some phone calls. Uh, if we don't play Catholic Mass, we get some phone calls. So it's just nice to know that people are watching Channel fourteen, even though some people may not think people are watching, but we definitely get phone calls. And whether or not people show up to the station is something not going, right? So, yeah, so just to have the opportunity to play local programming is very big for, for our station.
Thanks, Deshawn. You know, one of the ways that we have expanded what we've done over the last couple of years is by hiring two additional staff members. That's allowed us to do increased education and technical assistance, having someone be there so that when producers, local producers come in that want to use our equipment, they have somebody that can help them out and help guide them to do that. Apologize for the, the, uh, PowerPoint being a little jumpy, but, uh, we'll, we'll just make the best of it and move on to the next slide, Shar. We really wouldn't be doing justice if we didn't talk about the pandemic. The studio was closed to the public from March through November of twenty twenty. During this time, they were able to shift focus to assist local organizations that were hosting virtual fundraising events. As you can imagine, when, um, all of a sudden nonprofits couldn't have fundraisers, there was a bit of a panic, and looking to video and to studios to help do that. And we had some very successful ones. Um, Deshawn, what, what were a couple of, uh, examples of those that you were thinking were worth mentioning?
Uh, I think all the ones that are on the screen are definitely worth mentioning, um, just because they all do bring something positive to the community, especially like Project Beauty Share with the hygiene and giving women and people who may not have the best of stuff, the opportunity to still come down and, and take care of the hygiene and everything else. Um, even so much for, uh, Volunteers of America, uh, Spokane Hope. I mean, all of them definitely bring something. Um, it was great that we were able to help them raise the money that they were looking for to help keep their operations going and stuff. So, um, I was just lucky enough that we had the equipment and the know-how and the talented people from all of us that were involved to sit there and be able to help the community out like that. Especially Spokane Hope, they called us, and they were kind of, didn't know what to do. They were kind of nervous and scared, which I think we all worked, and it was all kind of new to us. But it was just great just to work with some of these nonprofits that I know they really, um, rely on fundraising. And so for Community Minded Television to work with those other nonprofits, it definitely helped everybody out, helped us out, helped the community out, and it definitely helped to help the people who really need those services.
Thank you, Deshawn. I know it was a, it was a big relief to, to organizations to be able to provide their fundraisers, and that was something that, um, we're really proud to be able to help with. Okay, Shar, you can move it ahead. Okay. Um, another really, I think, important thing that, that we do during this time was to develop some academies. Deshawn, you want to talk a little bit about how the Partnership of Spokane Public Schools came about?
Yeah, and I'll definitely have, uh, Michael Bethley jump in on this too, because it's definitely, once again, it's always a team effort and stuff. And I think just because of some of the people we know in the community and Sarah as well to jump in as too. But we definitely wanted to try to do more stuff for the community when it came to the youth, to maybe try to educate them more on production and stuff. So I'll kind of let Mike explain a little more on this and stuff, so.
Okay, great.
Um, hello. Uh, so yes, we, we were able to just, um, create a, uh, an academy that really focused, uh, on building the education and understanding, uh, and giving access to the youth for, for video production. And one thing about the academy that we were able to accomplish was getting a, a wide array of students in, um, from, from, um, different parts of the community. But, uh, being able to focus on the Northeast community and, um, a couple of, of, uh, other schools in Rogers, I believe Rogers, Shaw, and, um, Gary, if I, if I'm correct. But being able to focus on those communities and bring them the opportunity to, to, uh, experience that hands-on touch with that production was something that we were striving to do, and we were able to do it. Um, the, the partnership that, that, that came through was from, um, Oscar Harris and the Office of Community Engagement at Spokane Public Schools. And then alongside, I believe it was Inovia, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but, uh, that, that also opened up those opportunities for that partnership.
Yes, that is correct. We were able to offer all those students that participated in that particular program, um, at totally no cost programming. So they were able to participate, um, with their scholarships paid for. And we also just tried to offer that to anybody who, who was interested in, um, participating in any of our trainings. We also partnered with Parks and Rec. Um, as you know, they have a fantastic activities guide and a great, uh, social and online network. Um, so we were really able to, uh, reach additional audiences through, um, that new partnership with them. And, um, like I said, if people were interested and they felt that cost was a barrier, we really worked with them to try to find a partner in the community that would help them participate at no cost.
And this is a very hands-on, um, project that they all did. I know in the, in terms of the, the Northeast group that came in, they actually, uh, brainstormed the commercial, um, planned every part of the commercial, the actors who ran the cameras, who were the audio people, they wrote the script, they had a director. I mean, they had a real experience with, uh, with media by the time they were done with their, with their experience. So it was really very special, um, very special for the kids, all of them. Okay, well, we'll move on to talk about the financial overview, and I will call on our CFO, Nancy Rust, to talk us through that. Nancy?
Sure. Um, I know Shar is having difficulty, uh, managing the PowerPoint off of her device, so if this bounces around a little bit, uh, we'll do the best we can to get through this. Um, so as you see, we had the, uh, the financial success in twenty twenty during the pandemic that was unprecedented as far as other, uh, organizations, uh, were facing themselves. And we did receive a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant from the city of Spokane that basically financed our ability to do the great work that we were able to do during the pandemic for the community and, and just to keep the station open in general. Uh, we also received eighty thousand dollars for, uh, via the PPP funds in support of salaries and rental expenses in twenty twenty. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, of course, we don't have, uh, the city grant nor the PPP fund. So the shortfall you see there is a direct correlation between those two funding avenues not carrying over into twenty twenty-one. Historically, CME has financed, subsidized CMTV roughly about fifty thousand dollars a year, and, um, that is not reflected in this twenty twenty-one revenue, um, picture as well. So the net income of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand is a little bit deceiving because it does not in, uh, take into account our in-kind contributions from the parent organization, that being CME, nor, you know, the carryover of the seventy-nine thousand three oh eight offsets that, um, shortfall in twenty twenty-one as well. So if you, if we had the twenty nineteen numbers to compare, we actually were able to increase our contractual revenues in support of the, the, uh, services we offer to the community by about twenty percent, which is substantial. That's the biggest, uh, financial, uh, increase we've had in several years, as well as, as you see here in twenty twenty, of course, the, the studio was closed, but we received seventy-five dollars in classes in twenty twenty, and we're, uh, twenty twenty-one, we were able to secure twenty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four, which is almost a hundred percent increase from twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, we only were able to secure three hundred dollars in classes. So our classes to the community have, um, you know, just gone off the charts, which is really great to see. So overall, financially, um, we are really positioned well considering we are just coming out of a pandemic, and the work that they've been able to do in twenty twenty and carry on into twenty twenty-two is really astronomical, and they should be very proud of themselves. Um, and we thank the city very much for your, your financial support. Um, it has been, it's been able, it's keeping the door open. So thank you for that support, for sure.
Yes, we, we can't state that enough, um, how much that was appreciated and, um, what it lent to having us really, um, look at how we could throw all of our support into areas that we really felt that the community needed, which were the supports for nonprofits and also the workshops. Um, really critical as, you know, it's sometimes hard to remember, but a year ago, things were pretty slow and, and really shut down. And, um, the, the fact slow and really shut down, and the fact that this program was able to thrive some during that time is a testament to the people who are operating the program. And there's our CMTV van. Deshawn or Mike, you want to talk about how the van is used in the services for CMTV?
Yeah, I think the van definitely has given us the opportunity to be mobile, go to places that we didn't think we were able to go. We have something, it's called a tricaster, but we like to call it a production in a box. So we get to do all our live switching and PTZ cameras and pretty much put it in the back of the van and go to places and really just meet the community that have needs that may not know to come to our location, or they may want to use their facility. But having the van definitely gave us an opportunity to just to be mobile and to go to other places, so I definitely enjoy the van. Do you have anything to say towards that, Mike?
Yes, it's a beautiful rap band that really helps us advertise as we go around the city as well. So if you see it, just give us a wave.
I get it mentioned to me often that the CMTV van is seen cruising around, so it is like a mobile billboard most especially. That's the end of our planned presentation. We certainly are available. I have the team here to answer any questions that you might have. Again, I just want to just communicate how appreciative we are for all of the support that the city has given us and the belief in the crew that is obviously very talented in doing their work. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you all. I've had several chances to appear on television shows produced there, and what struck me is that the staff really got the producers up to speed, you know? The staff wasn't doing it. They had trained them, so that means they have taught people how to fish in terms of television production, and you guys have done a great job and great equipment. So thanks, everyone, for doing that.
Thank you, my half.
And we'll let you go and look forward to hearing from you next.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
All right, that brings us to our legislative agenda for this evening, and we start out with a special budget ordinance.
Would you like to do the appointments first?
Or we could do the appointments first. So thank you so much. We have three reappointments, if you'd like to read those, Terry.
Okay. Reappointment of Jennifer West to the Spokane Airport Board to serve a three-year term from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2024, and reappointment of Grant Shipley and Taylor Stevens to the Bicycle Advisory Board to serve a three-year term from December 1, 2021 to November 30, 2024.
All those in favor of those reappointments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the three of you are all reappointed. Thanks so much for your service. We depend on it. If you out there watching are interested in serving on a city board or commission, we have a webpage, City of Spokane Boards and Commissions, that has all of them and what the current vacancies are and what they do, and you can apply to the mayor's office if you're interested. The mayor picks nominees and then council confirms them. So thanks for that, and now we'll go to the special budget ordinance.
Ordinance is amending ordinance number C-35971, passed by the City Council December 14, 2020, entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2021. Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2021, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage. And Declaring an Emergency in Appropriating Funds in." Ordinance C-36145, Asset Management Capital Fund, Number One, Increase Revenue by $250,000. A, $250,000 of the increased revenue represents a transfer in from the General Fund. Two, increase expenditures by $250,000. A, $250,000 of the increased expenditure is provided solely for capital improvements to the Cannon Street Shelter, including the addition of supplementary shelter structures on the premises to be used for providing shelter to persons who have been exposed to COVID-19. This action allows for capital improvements to the Cannon Street Shelter.
And we have one member of the community that would like to speak about this, and that's Nicolette Arcletree. Nicolette, if you would like to hit star three. Welcome to City Council, Nicolette. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening. How much had been spent to date on that building? I mean, I'm talking the cost of the purchase, the remodel, repair, to get it all up to date and up to code. I know that this question has been asked by me several times. It was asked by Councilman Cathcart during a briefing session or study session, and I'm just not sure that question has been answered. When I tried to do a rough calculation on my own, using the real estate affidavit and looking at past city council agendas, my calculation is that tonight, after this approval, it'll be well over $2 million, and that doesn't include any operating costs. It just includes the purchase of the building and all the costs of repairs and remodels. And I do think that I'm missing a big chunk of that cost. So if we could actually get that answered, I think that would be fantastic for the transparency of everything. I also see here that this is essentially supposed to not only be for capital improvements on the building itself, but also to allow for outside isolation structures. I'm a little bit confused by this because I was under the impression that the Spokane Regional Health District and the county put together a contract with Salvation Army for isolation facilities, and so I'm not sure why those aren't sufficient. And furthermore, it doesn't make sense, I have been told that these are RVs that are these outside structures. And if that's the case, then it doesn't make sense to me why they can house COVID-positive or exposed patients in RVs, but an average citizen cannot do that. It just seems clearly hypocritical. If it's good enough for them to be able to do and that's safe, then average citizens should be able to, you know, have that available as an option for their family members that might need to be isolated. Also, it doesn't seem to indicate how many COVID patients will be able to fit in there. It just seems like there's a lot of questions looming here, and I know this is going to get approved anyway, but I feel like we need to be asking more of these questions of the administration and demanding that they come back to us with these answers before these things get voted on and before more money is given to them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I see Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to share, I did get some numbers from the administration, from Tanya, and so I just thought I'd share those with everybody. So $407,532 for the purchase in 2019, $1,246,140 for remodel work in 2020, and that puts us at 1.6. And then with the $250,000 being asked for now, that would put us at about 1.9 million. And there's an asterisk that other work may not have been considered a capital cost. So it's possible there's some other money that's been invested in the building that's not accounted for in those line items. But I did get that from Tanya this morning, and so I wanted to make sure and share that, that we do have that information. I continue to think that, I mean, I get it, we don't really have a lot of other options. This is kind of what we have to do at this point, but if you could rewind the tape, the amount of money that we've put into this structure, I feel like we probably could have done something bigger and better in some other way. So it's unfortunate we can't go back in time, but there's not a lot of money put into this building.
Thank you for getting those numbers for us. I see Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, and I certainly hear our community member Nicolette and my fellow counselor, Michael Cathcart. The challenge is, we did buy that building. We could go back in time. I don't know what the condition was, and we haven't invested in it, but the city owns it. It has become our responsibility to maintain it safely as long as we are operating a shelter out of it. And as in any old building, our reality may be that it will have ongoing issues that may be coming before council. I had just a quick conversation with the facilities maintenance guy, and already there's some chatter about a roof. So I will support it. We can look at tighter controls and what's our long-term game in that building going forward.
Councilmember Stratton.
Can anyone tell me, for how many people, how many people does the Cannon Shelter hold? Do we, I know when I was there, it didn't seem, what, 30? Is it more than that?
It's under 100.
I think it's 60, under 100, but I think it's 60 or 70.
I was thinking 60, Councilmember Kinnear.
60, okay.
I think it's over 70 now. It was at 60, and then they did some remodeling and they increased the spaces, and now has showers, but I want to say it was between 70 and 80.
Okay, I thought it was smaller than that. Thanks.
All right. Any other council commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear. Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. How about the next special budget ordinance?
Ordinance C-36146, Asset Management Fund, Number One, Increase Appropriation by $133,000. A, $133,000 of the increased appropriation is provided solely for immediate emergency capital outlay and machinery and equipment expenses. B, the increase in appropriation is from the asset management funds unappropriated reserves. This action allows for the purchase of a replacement boiler for Fire Station 1.
We don't have any requested community comment on this one. Is there any council commentary? All right, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Chief Schaefer sent us all the video of the boiler, and it was very disturbing and unsafe. We get sure that with the community, but we have to address that boiler issue immediately.
Yep, that was truly a picture's worth a thousand words video. All right, I will have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear. Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And we have another special budget ordinance, which, if I understand it correctly, it's mostly a bookkeeping one, but go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Ordinance C-36147, General Fund, Number One, Decrease Revenue by $1,575,000. A, $1,575,000 of the decreased revenue represents the estimated amount that was to be reimbursed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The reimbursement will shift to the Arterial Street Fund. Two, decrease appropriation by $1,575,000. A, $1,575,000 of the decreased appropriation was provided to the Engineering Services Department solely for the purpose of emergency work related to the Clark Avenue landslide. The emergency work will shift to the Arterial Street Fund. An Arterial Street Fund, Number One, Increase Revenue by $2,100,000. A, $1,575,000 of the increased revenue represents the estimated amount to be reimbursed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. B, $525,000 of the increased revenue represents a transfer in from the General Fund. Two, increase appropriation by $2,100,000. A, $2,100,000 of the appropriation is provided solely for the purpose of emergency work related to the Clark Avenue landslide. This action funds necessary operation expenses related to the emergency situation created by the Clark Avenue landslide.
Thank you, and there's no requested community comment. Any council commentary? All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero, and then we have two very small, well, excuse me, we have another special budget ordinance, which is quite small, but go ahead.
Ordinance C-36148, Iron Bridge Tiff Debt Service Fund, Number One, Increase Appropriation by $200. A, $200 of the increased appropriation is provided solely for debt payment. And University District LRF Debt Service Fund, Number One, Increase Appropriation by $1. A, $1 of the increased appropriation is provided solely for debt payment. And Gulf Fund, Number One, Increase Appropriation by $340,745. A, $340,745 of the increased appropriation is provided solely for other improvements, including roof and HVAC replacement. This action allows for adjusting appropriation authority in selected funds.
Again, there's no community comment on this one. Is there any council commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none, I have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Another special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C-36149, General Fund, Number One, Decrease the Appropriation for the Probation Officer One Position in the Community Justice Services Department by $12,545. Two, Increase the Appropriation for Operating Lease in the Community Justice Services Department by $12,545. Three, Decrease the Appropriation Level for the Court Clerk One Position in the Municipal Court Department by $77,500. Four, Increase the Appropriation Level for Operating Lease in the Municipal Court Department by $77,500. There is no change to the appropriation level in the General Fund. This action allows for increasing the operating lease budget to pay the 2020 Public Safety Building and Courthouse Annex joint use rent.
There's no community comment. Essentially, this takes care of our lease to the county for our public safety and courtrooms over there, and the charges are not predictable, and they're kind of lagging from past years, and then they bring them to us. And so we're paying for the increased amount for this year that we owe by taking money from vacant positions. With that, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero, and we have one more special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C-36150, Fire EMS Fund, Number One, Increase Revenue by $756,812. A, revenue received by the department as reimbursement of costs incurred responding to regional fire mobilizations. Two, increase appropriations by $756,812. A, increase in appropriations to offset costs incurred responding to regional fire mobilizations. B, costs related to overtime, backfill, and travel lodging. This action allows for funding of unbudgeted costs related to responding to regional wildfire mobilizations.
All right, there's no requested community comment. Any council commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. There was one emergency ordinance listed, but it was not going to be voted on today. It's deferred till next Monday, and now we're at resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Resolution 2021-91, Approving the Spokane Employees Retirement System. Boards Change in the Employee and Employer Contribution Rates in accordance with Spokane Municipal Code 4.14.070, deferred from November 1, 2021 agenda.
And again, there's no community comment requested. Is there any council commentary? Councilmember Mumm.
I want to thank the staff that helped look at this and the other council... I want to thank the staff that helped look at this and the other council members and the SERS Board. I'm really against raising this right now, but after listening to the board and the situation that the pension is in, we pretty much need to do it. Not only do we need to increase it now, but we also need to shore it up. And so I'm hopeful that this will carry on through the next year and there will be a dedicated funding mechanism to shore this up for the long term. It's an obligation that the city gladly pays for its hardworking employees, yet overall when we look at the health of the city, to have a pension funded so low compared to others around the state, it does, I think, put us at a little bit of a disadvantage for the health of the city finances. So I think the best outcome, even though this, I will support this now, even though we would have a raise this year, it would be reimagined next year with fresh data. And if there was a way to allocate some of the unfilled salaries that had pledged, in a way, to be contributing to the SERS fund, that might help alleviate increases in the future. So I hope everyone can work on that later, but it's something that the city needs to take care of in the long run to get our pensions funded up over, well over eighty and even ninety percent. Thank you.
Any other council commentary? All right, and let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2021-98, Forming an Ad hoc Equity Subcommittee of the City Council's Finance and Administration Committee.
Right, we don't have any requested community comment. Councilmember Wilkerson, do you want to tee this up?
Thank you very much, I was ready. So this subcommittee, equity and inclusivity is called out throughout the City of Spokane Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 10, which states the role of us improving the well-being of individuals and families, communities, addressing factors, we all know those. But over the past two years, we have seen what many of us already knew, that the existing inequities put at risk the health and safety of our communities. COVID put the spotlight on the inequities and the importance for us in government to build relationships and to create programs and policy in collaboration with communities impacted by inequities. So this subcommittee will be advisory. This will allow us to have other voices, and even tonight, we have heard the word inequity. And how do we as government start standing up to make sure we operationalize community members to have a voice? It is missing. I'm hoping that we will partner with the administration. I don't know if they have this type of voice on their side of the House, but as council, it's very important. And it's under the Finance Committee because everything we do always has some type of financial component to it that really affects the outcome. So it's the old adage, you can tell our priorities by where we spend our money. So I'm in support of this tonight. It is in its infancy. We'll be standing up, growing it, and we'll be inviting all those who wants to be a part of it to be a part of it.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I've thought about this quite a bit and I've, after really trying to think it today especially, I've really come to the conclusion that I'm going to vote no. And the reason is twofold. One, is as was pointed out in the opening of our meeting tonight, the Human Rights Commission serves as an advisory body to the City Council. And I think they're doing this work already. And so I really feel that to do this would be duplicative of that. But furthermore, and really at the heart of why I have concerns, is I think one of the things we really need to emphasize is geographic equity. And there's no provision in this resolution for geographic equity. In fact, it leaves it out. And so I really believe that Northeast Spokane needs equity. It has, at least before COVID, brought in more sales tax probably than any other district, and yet it didn't necessarily always get the same or more, as it should, of the spending on, you know, projects and parks and things like that over, not over the last few years, but over a long period of time. And so I just really think that if we're going to focus on equity, that's an area of equity that also deserves a focus. And there is no committee or subcommittee that's looking at that specific type of issue. And so I'm going to vote no because I think that there should be a provision for geographic equity, standing up parts of our community that have been underserved, under-supported for a very long time. And this goes beyond race or anything else, but I think it's something that we need to focus on. And so to emphasize that, that's why I'm voting no on this tonight.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, and thanks, Councilmember Wilkerson, for bringing this forward. I'll just go ahead and say that District One is definitely someone, a district that's forgotten about oftentimes in the budget, and it's not because of its location in the city, it's because of the people who live in it. And we have the majority of people of color and the majority of people of poverty, so this will inevitably help District One by putting this together because it will help the people of color and it will help people who are in poverty, which is going to be District One. So very, very supportive of it, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, and I just want to state, in the resolution, it does say citywide. You were not specific, it is the whole city because these challenges exist. So we did not put in a specific demographic area, we set the city of Spokane.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes six to one. And that brings us to another resolution.
Resolution 2021-97, Improving an Extension of a Development Agreement Regarding the Preliminary Plot and Plan Unit Development Referred to as the Vistas at Beacon Hill, deferred from the November 22, 2021 Agenda.
All right, so a week ago, we were looking at this and we were, our lawyer was negotiating with the developer's lawyer about setting aside some land or arranging for a park and ride, and they worked on that agreement in that language, along with making sure the streets were built to public street standards, and that making it an extension for three years to get all their plans in instead of five years. So those were some changes from the original extension. We have one member of the public who has signed up to testify, and that's Brennan Mayer. Brennan, if you're there, hit star three. All right, Brennan, welcome back to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Brennan Mayer. I work for DTJ Design. I'm just calling in to answer any questions that the council members have, if there's any remaining questions. I just wanted to make myself available and to smooth that out. That's all I have to say. If there's anything that you would like me to address, let me know.
All right, so thanks Brennan. Does anyone have any more questions for Brennan? All right, really appreciate you making yourself available. Any council commentary? I saw Councilmember Kinnear first, then Councilmember Mumm.
I wanted to thank James Richmond for being so flexible and working to get this through, to get these changes. Also, the developer who was willing to make these changes to set aside the land for a park and ride. I think it's important that when we have development that is not near a center corridor, this is one mile from a bus stop, that we accommodate people without forcing them to own or drive a car. So I just wanted to acknowledge that a lot of work went into making those changes that I believe are necessary for a development of this size. So wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Mumm.
I want to thank the council people and the staff that worked to make lemonade out of a lemon here, and I know people worked really hard to do it, but I won't be supporting this because it doesn't, is not consistent with the comp plan, and I don't think it's really our job to cut deals with developers. I think that next time this comes up, if there's a development agreement, we should send it back to the Hearing Examiner. That's why we hire a professional Hearing Examiner who's a professional attorney. I think it was tough on the developers who were trying to reach out to individual council members, and it's just not appropriate for us to get into the weeds on this kind of thing. And so that's just my recommendation in the future from a process point of view. I just looked into the Development Agreement Code. Those things can go on in perpetuity. They basically freeze the plans at the time that they were put together, which was the mid 2000s. It could go on forever. You can extend this forever as a council, and I just don't think that's the intent of the law. And I hope you can maybe look at that and change that in the future as well, that a development agreement is going to expire and not have this perpetual extension, because it puts the council in a really rocky place and, you know, you brush with, oh, you're anti-development or you're anti-density. No, that's not it at all. It's about fairness and what's fair and the new codes. And so I think the council that's supporting this put together a pretty good package, but just from a process point of view, I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I will be supporting it, but I have to say, my first time going through this, that horse trading at the bottom of the night at the last meeting was really uncomfortable where lawyers were basically emailing back over the phone at the last minute. We postponed them on the agenda, and it did not feel right. So I support this, the work has gone into it, but I have to admit with Councilmember Mumm, we need a better process than the one we had on this one going forward.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Just grateful that we're getting this over the finish line and hopefully we'll see some housing come out of this.
Any other commentary? All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Nay.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Burke.
Nay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes five to two. We have a couple more ordinances, well, a few more ordinances after, during the hearings, but now we're to first reading ordinances.
Ordinance C 36151, Updating the Framework for the Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area, Amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 4.31.020, 0.30, 0.030, 0.040, 0.080, 0.090, and .140. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right, we're going to go to our hearings of our annual comprehensive plan updates, and we have a few people signed up to testify about them. Make sure that you're on the phone because there's a pretty long lag in the video, so you don't want to depend on that. And again, when I call on you, hit star three, and then I'll invite you to speak for up to three minutes, and when you're done, please hit star three again so that unraises, lowers your hand and makes it easier to keep track of who's next. I believe Mr. Kevin Freebot is going to tee us up on the first one, and then we'll take any commentary and a vote, and then we'll go through the rest of them. So welcome to City Council.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President, members of the council.
I'm wrong. I'm going to have, I think I'm going to have Ms. Fister read, maybe just read the first one, I guess.
Okay. H1A, Final Reading Ordinance 36139, Relating to Application Z 20-194, Comp and Amending Map LU1 Land Use Plan Map of the City's Comprehensive Plan from Light Industrial to Centers and Corridors Core, for approximately 2.5 acres located at 120 North Magnolia Street, Parcel 35163.3001, and amending the zoning map from Light Industrial LI to Centers and Corridors Type 1 Employment Center, CC1-EC. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right, Kevin, take it away on the ordinance 36139.
Thank you, sir. Very quickly, I'm going to go through just a couple of things just for the benefit of the public. I'm very pleased to bring you these ordinances today. This is the end of a long road, a 12 to 14 month process that we go through just about every year, and I just wanted to highlight all of the excellent work that's been done by city staff and the applicants and, of course, the public as well throughout this whole process. So we are at the second to last step, which is your hearing for all six of the applications this year, and so we'll briefly go through them one at a time, as you mentioned. But very quickly, I just wanted to summarize, just as you know, we've provided you quite a bit of material. I do apologize for the amount of reading, but these are quite detailed, so you've received findings and conclusions from the Plan Commission. You've received our staff report, which includes any comments you received prior to the hearing. There is an append, there is an attachment to all of the staff reports with all of the relevant comp plan policies and, of course, the application materials from each applicant. You have received all of the comments that we received thus far, and also any additional materials that have come up along the way. So just as a reminder, as you start to think about your decisions on these, the Municipal Code Section 17G, which guides comprehensive plan amendments, does provide a number of options for council. Obviously, you can approve, you can consider, continue the consideration for another meeting. You can remand items back to Plan Commission for their input. That does require that you include a deadline for when they should get back to you. Or you can also modify proposals, which, as you recall, last year, a couple of them were modified by council at the end. Or, of course, you can vote to deny. And so those are the options laid out in the Municipal Code. And of course, Mr. Richmond is here to answer questions if we get into details there. An overview very quickly, we've got five amendments to the Land Use Plan Map. These were all submitted as private applications during last year's application process, and they are scattered around the, pretty much the core of the city. And then, of course, we have a last application, that's, that one is a change to the bike map in Chapter Four. That's a city-sponsored application. So that one came out of our office with Mr. Quinnhurst through consultation with the Bicycle Advisory Board and with neighborhoods and others. So the first one is ordinance 36139. This one, the public would know as File Z 20194, COMP. It relates to the single parcel at 120 North Magnolia. This is about two and a half acres. This is where the historic McKinley School Building is on this site, as well as a small, more recent warehouse you can see on the west end of the site. The proposed land use for this is, of course, CC Core, which would combine it with the Centers and Corridors Core area to the south along Sprague, and the proposed zoning is Centers and Corridors Type 1 Employment Center, which, again, would match the center to the south. Staff's recommendation on this one was for approval. Plan Commission also voted unanimously to recommend approval of this one. And just as a quick reminder, this is currently designated Light Industrial, and the applicant is hoping to fold it into the CC Core along Sprague. The zoning would, of course, go from Light Industrial to CC1-EC. So those are the very basic details. At this point, I believe Mr. Hume is probably on the phone waiting to speak, and he is the applicant's agent for this proposal.
Yes, so we only have one person signed up to speak? Yes, so we only have one person signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Dwight Hume on behalf of the applicant. Dwight, if you'd like to hit star three. All right, welcome to City Council, Dwight. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, what has been presented to you by staff is certainly accurate. And I would just add to that, that not only do we have unanimous support of the Planning Commission, we actually had anxious support for this approval from neighboring industrial users who are just tired of seeing the, the rundown appearance of, and, and no activity on this property. So, they're, they're hoping against hope that this will be the cure to finally see some improvements to the neighborhood. And that's all I have to add.
Thank you so much, Dwight. Any council commentary? Go ahead and just volunteer.
Council President.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm in support of this. I have to say, I say it a lot, I grew up four blocks from this school. I'm too young to have attended McKinley, but I had neighbors who did, where that was a very vibrant neighborhood on that block. My grandmother lived on the next corner. There was a house on a little hill, and to see it in the state that it's in now is sad. So, I support the redevelopment of this. I think it will be an asset to the East Sprague Corridor, and to the neighborhood, and to the vibrancy that could happen down there.
All right. Any other council commentary? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call. Mr. Hume, if you could hit that star three, that'll lower your hand and make it easier for us to call on the next person. But let's have a council roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. That brings us to hearing B, ordinance 36140, which Ms. Fister will read.
Final reading ordinance C 36140 relating to application Z 20-206 comp, amending map LU 1 land use plan map of the city's comprehensive plan from residential 410 to residential 1530 for approximately 3.9 acres located at 155 173 177 203 203 and a half, 209 215 221 227 301 305 317 327 and 403 East Cleveland Avenue, parcels 3508 2.091 9 through .0933, and amending the zoning map from residential single-family RSF to residential multifamily RMF. By a vote of six to two, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right, Kevin.
Absolutely. So, this one is the application on East Cleveland Avenue. We're talking about just east of Division. You can't see it on this aerial, but it is just below the Bluff. So, this, let's see if I can turn on my pen here. This, this line you see going diagonally just behind the parcels is the Bluff. So, that kind of gives you an idea where we're talking about. It is 15 parcels of 3.9 acres. The original application was for this one parcel you see on the west end on North Mayfair Street. So, that part of it is a private application. However, during the processing of this application, Plan Commission voted to expand it to include the additional 14 parcels. So, this is one of our combined private and city-sponsored applications. The proposed land use again is residential 15 to 30. That's kind of our middle-of-the-range residential density with a proposed zoning of residential multifamily. You'll see here for staff recommendation, there's little stars. That's because staff did recommend approval of the private application, the single parcel to the west. However, we did not issue a recommendation for the remainder of the project area. Plan Commission did vote to recommend approval, and they recommended this additional area as well. So, just showing you again the land use plan map, what we have here is, this is a strip of single-family residential along Cleveland with residential 15 to 30 to the west. This proposal would add that, add all of this into that residential 15 to 30 you see as a, that runs kind of along the general commercial to the south and to the west. The zoning, of course, would do similar, residential multifamily to the west, and it would line that up and, and match everything west of Mayfair here. So, that's what I've got for this one. Thank you.
Any council commentary on this amendment?
I do. This is Lori. Kevin, just to reiterate, there's a natural transition zone here because what isn't obvious is the houses to the north are on a bluff. So, there's no, it's a natural area where there's an obvious separation. Let's just put it that way.
That, that's correct. The bluff, the bluff averages about 70 feet all along this area, and the, with a, with a, implementing zoning of RMF, it's the 35-foot maximum. And so, there is a natural break at that point that kind of separates these parcels from those above. There is a connection offered by Mayfair Street. This is a one-way street that goes down the hill, but other than that, they're, they're somewhat separated.
Any other commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
I just, was there any public testimony? I just saw that it said public testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was, and thank you.
Yep.
And Lindsey Cornegay, if you would like to hit star three. Lindsey, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, thank you so much. Thanks to Kevin as well, and to the Planning Department for their hard work on, on this proposal. I, my name's Lindsey Cornegay again. I represent the landowner here for the original application, as Kevin pointed out, the original application on the, the left-hand side there, that smaller square. So, just a few points briefly, I'd like to emphasize that the Planning Department did recommend approval of our initial proposal, and that the planning, the majority of the Planning Commission also recommended approval of our proposal, proposal, excuse me. After much thoughtful discussion, and there was some general agreement regarding the impact this will have on the neighborhood, as well as the applicable standards being met in the comprehensive plan. As you know, policy LU 1.4 of the comprehensive plan states that higher-density residential is to be directed to centers and corridors, but that infill is permitted outside of centers and corridors as well, in areas where the existing neighboring land use is higher-density residential. Here, 155 East Cleveland is bordered by a commercial facility to one side and multifamily housing to another, making the requested change consistent with policy LU 1.4. The designation of these neighboring properties is also what prevents 155 East Cleveland, Cleveland from being an ideal location for a single-family home. We believe that this property's best use is as multifamily, and the findings of the staff and the Planning Department found that the area itself has sufficient utilities, streets, and physical features to support a multifamily designation. We believe that this change will have a positive impact as well, not only on the neighborhood by developing what is currently vacant land, but on Spokane generally in our present housing crisis. Putting otherwise vacant land to its highest and best use should be a priority. This property is ideal for infill of multifamily housing, but as mentioned, is not ideal for a single-family home. The developer is, is seeking to put this property to its highest and best use as additional housing for the city and, and the neighborhood that it's in. So, thank you all again for your time. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Lindsey. If you could hit star three to lower your hand. Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, thank you. I have just a couple of questions, maybe Kevin and/or Councilmember Kinnear can answer. Did, was there any feedback from the neighborhood at all? Is this Bemis or Logan?
This is Logan, but it's close enough to Nevada-Lidgerwood that both neighborhoods were ident, were notified. We did receive quite a few letters. You'll notice in the staff report, there's a number of them. We did receive some after that, prior to the Plan Commission hearing, some more after the Plan Commission hearing, although quite a few of those were Xerox copies of older letters. But it has seen a lot of, a lot of neighborhood comment, both for and against. I, you know, we could count them up if you wanted, but definitely a lot of discussion, a lot of concerns about impacts to the neighborhood to the north. But we've also received a few letters that were supportive and thought that, that perhaps the proposal should look going further, so.
Okay. And then my other question is, there were two dissenting votes here, and if Councilmember Kinnear can recall, or you, Kevin, what that was about? If that, what the issues were, if they were illuminating.
Oh, from, from the Plan Commission?
Yes, I do not recall.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I couldn't hear you.
I, I do not recall what the reasoning was.
Okay. The, the stated reason for at least one of the dissenting votes was that they just felt that this was not fully consistent with LU 1.4, that, in that it was a little distant from, from the foothill center, which is to the east. There was a lot of discussion about that, back and forth during the workshops, but at the hearing stage, only two were voting against it, so.
If I could add to, Councilmember Mum, to the west is the Ruby Division Corridor that was pointed out several times. So, it would be, it was odd to me that they were looking to the east for a corridors or a center rather than to the west, which, as you can see, Division is just blocks away from that.
I think some of the discussion was that Division is not a designated corridor on the land use plan map. It is, anyone, anyone who looks at corridors will go, "That's a corridor." But there, there's a distinct capital C corridor in the comp plan, and it is not one of those.
And I guess my point was, when talking to the Plan Commission, that there were services on Division such as transit and other services that higher-density could avail themselves of.
Other council commentary questions? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Oh.
Sorry, I had my hand up.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cathcart. Thank you for your time. Go ahead.
That's okay. Just going to offer just a quick word of support. I just, I just think this makes sense. As was pointed out, it is really close to Division, which, yes, not an official corridor, but also just down, you know, any of these side streets, and you're, you're at the yokes, you're, you're not far from services and things that you would need to have access to. And so, to me, it makes a lot of sense. It's going to provide us some more housing and, which is desperately needed. So, I'm happy to support this tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other council commentary or questions? Go ahead and volunteer, because I can't see everybody. All right, hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And that brings us to the next ordinance.
H 1C, final reading ordinance C 36141 relating to application file Z 20-207 comp, amending map LU 1 land use plan map of the city's comprehensive plan from residential 410 to general commercial for approximately .16 acres located at 1015 West Montgomery Avenue, parcel 3507 3.2505, and amending the zoning map from residential single-family RSF to centers and corridors type 2 district center CC 2-DC. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right, Kevin, tell us about this.
Thank you. So, this is file 207 comp. We're talking about a single parcel of just under .2 acres. However, the, the same owner owns the parcels to the east and the parcels to the south. So, their overall ownership is .7 acres. The reason that's really worth mentioning is that that is the area that we base our notification off of. So, it's, you know, it's 400 feet from that wider area. However, the only actual change is to this one property that currently home, currently contains a home that's being used as multifamily housing. So, the proposed land use would be general commercial, which would make all of the adjoining parcels match in their land use, and the zoning would be centers and corridors type 2 district center. Just to note, this is in a corridor. Corridors are typically zoned district center, which is why, that we don't have a center, or we don't have a corridor zoning, it's just district center zoning. Staff's recommendation, following all of the analysis, was of course, to recommend approval of this one. Plan Commission also recommended unanimously for approval. You did receive a couple of letters on this one, and there was some discussion. Just to show you the maps again, give you some context, we're talking about right next to general commercial along North Monroe Street. This would of course make all of these parcels owned by the same individual match in their land use map designation of general commercial. The zoning is, the entire entirety there is CC 2 DC along North Monroe. This would make this match that. So, it's currently single-family, but it would be centers and corridors type 2 district center. And that's all I have.
All right. I've got two people to testify from the public, but are there any questions for Kevin from council? All right, not seeing any. So, the, I have two people, Eric Iannelli and Dwight Hume. Eric, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right, Eric, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Eric Iannelli. I live about a block and a half from the property in question. I, it's hard to know where to begin because the situation on paper looks very, very straightforward. It's a almost insignificant formality in that it's a land use change. But the situation on the ground is considerably more fraught in that the, by changing this land use, it allows the same developer to kind of set up plans. It starts a, a sequence of dominos really, that allows the developer to develop this, this adjacent parcel of land. And the reason that's an issue is because this same developer, as Kevin pointed out, also owns the Lloyd Apartments, which sits kind of to the, to the south of this property. And certainly within the past two years, but I would say probably extends a bit further into the past than that, the Lloyd has become a real blight on the neighborhood. You just, I pass it at least twice a day, walking my daughter to and from school. There are drug deals going on out the windows, you know, people chucking up rocks, packages coming down. The two front, the two windows on the front doors have been smashed out for, one for a month, the other for two weeks. No attempt of repair has been made. The building is falling into disrepair. The owner usually has said that this all comes down to a few problem tenants, but in my talks with other neighbors and other business owners, the excuse is kind of like the check is in the mail or my dog ate my homework. It seems to be one that's been routinely used. And so, the general feel, fear among both business owners in the immediate area, as well as neighbors who've had to deal with a lot of the issues caused by the Lloyd, its tenants, and the lack of control, is that this is going to be Lloyd 2, and we're going to have a massive devolution in the quality of life at the end of Mansfield and Montgomery when this other property is developed. And so, I would just implore the council, even though this seems like such a, a formality, I would implore the council to maybe decline temporarily and, and vote nay on this until the situation at the Lloyd has been resolved satisfactorily for neighbors and business owners. I know Councilmember Stratton, I've been in communication with you and have given you as much information as I have regarding some of the knock-on and residual effects that the activity at the Lloyd has had on the surrounding area. So, yeah, I would just ask that you politely say nay on, in this time around, with the caveat that it could be revisited at a future, a future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And if you could hit star three to lower your hand. Dwight Hume, if you would like to hit star three to raise your hand. Welcome back to City Council, Dwight. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The previous speaker is talking about an unfortunate situation that the owner has not caused. As he explained to the Planning Commission, it was largely a part of losing control of uh... as he explained to the Planning Commission, it was largely a part of losing control of tenants during COVID, and I'm not exactly sure of all the agencies that have been involved. But he's very sensitive to that issue, notwithstanding it is presumptuous to say that we're doubling the size of the problem by your actions to approve this. More importantly, this does, as staff said and as the Planning Commission agreed, it squares up the commercial corridor designation and enables the property, the subject property, which contains a home of over 100 years old, to be torn down and replaced with something that most likely would be a combination retail and residential, but certainly something that would be up to code. The centers and corridor policies are such that this is simply an implementation of what was intended by the adoption of centers and corridors. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Dwight, and go ahead and hit star three to lower your hand. Any council commentary? Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. I'm gonna stand with EG tonight. I have had meetings with the neighbors that live on Mansfield and Montgomery, and the businesses that are along that Monroe corridor on the same side. I've had meetings with the developer, the owner, who was very, very nice and gracious to come to a meeting that the neighbors called to talk about these issues. And my big concern is that we can talk, and I've learned so much from Councilmember Mumm on planning and centers and corridors, and, but at what point do we stop and say, "Yeah, this is a great project for centers and corridors," but it's also affected his, his earlier projects have affected those businesses. So we have business owners that have these people who are gathering around and not being policed out. They're sleeping in their parking lots, and in their alleys, and in their door on Monroe, and opening, the door openings. This property on Mansfield is now, just so everybody knows, in a chronic nuisance state with FPD, and we also involve Matt Bolson, who's been working or trying to work with the developer. My concern is that, this is my old neighborhood, I know that neighborhood, I'm certainly not against more development in that neighborhood. What I'm concerned about is that the fear that the neighbors right now have on those two blocks, because it's connected, because this venture is connected and the development's the same person that they're dealing with. I have been told by neighbors that this is a hotspot. I know that there was an incident with individual, two individuals, one had a gun, and some kids were playing on a trampoline, and the gun was flying in the air. We have, I believe, one or two young families that have moved into this neighborhood have left. So what I, this has caused me a lot of angst, because if I was one of those young families that could afford to buy a home, that's gonna be the neighborhood in Northwest Spokane that you can still afford to buy homes, and they're older homes, big older homes, and I have my family settled, and now I'm afraid to let them outside without having, you know, to watch them 24/7. And then I find out that we're going to allow development of this area. I've lost trust in the city, I'm scared to death, and I'm gonna leave, and they have lost families in that neighborhood. It's not a good situation right now. I have to say publicly that it was amazing to me that we had neighbors, some business owners and the landlord, who sat down and talked with us for probably two hours, trying to come up with some solutions. I'm not seeing them, I'm still driving through that neighborhood, checking them out. There was a business that was across the street from the Lloyd, they've left, so it's an empty building. And if you go there on certain days, there are sleeping bags, needles, bottles, everything there. So this is not, I also want to say, this is not personal against the landlord at all, I've met him, I have absolutely no problem with him, but I do worry that we're inflicting more on this neighborhood, and we're not giving the developer enough time to prove to this neighborhood and to these businesses that that apartment, the Lloyd, can be cleaned up. I was just there, drove by last week, the door was ajar with a beer can in it, so people could come and go, they're supposed to be locked at all times, but people were coming and going. So I just, I don't want to do this to a neighborhood, any neighborhood, but I feel very responsible, this is a neighborhood in my district, and I want to support their fears, and I want to be able to say that we've listened, and that maybe right now is the time for this, let's give this process the year to get cleaned up, it's a mess. You can talk to some of the businesses and some of those homeowners, some of those parents of those kids that walk two blocks to Trinity Catholic School. I would like to give this time to settle down, for the developer to prove that he can do business in a neighborhood, and a business and corridor, and be a good neighbor. So for those reasons, I'm not going to support this, but I just want everybody to know it's more because I don't want to put this neighborhood through any more than they've already been put through. And recently, this has been going on about a year, so I can imagine how tired they must be.
Thank you. Councilmember Mumm, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
So here's what gives me pause, and thank you, Councilmember Stratton, for all the time you've invested, and the listening and working with the neighborhood on this. This is taking a residential single-family house to commercial. It's taking it from the lowest density to one of the highest, with no transition, which is part of why we have this conflict. And we've identified this as an issue in our community, where we have, you know, a lot of activity or commercial areas that butt right up against single-family. We need to have these transition zones, and we've talked about it, we've asked the Plan, Planning Department to, we've asked the administration for funding these projects, it's coming. We've got potentially ARPA money coming for some of these things, and I, I'm going to vote with my seatmate and just take a pause on this. It needs a greater approach, not just for this one lot, it needs an approach for the whole area, because these kinds of conflicts will continue to come up unless we do better job planning and helping the transition from the growing commercial and industrial areas that are creeping into our RSF. Yes, we want the development, but not at the expense of our community and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm really sympathetic to what Councilmember Stratton is saying, and it's, it's really frustrating to see that we have the continuation of problems like these in, in certain apartment complexes, certain houses, certain areas in our community. I know I've got a few in Northeast Spokane that, no matter how hard you try to deal with them, it seems like you just cannot shut them down. And so I really think the answer is swifter and steeper penalties for folks who operate or own nuisance homes. To me, that is the direction that we really need to go in. We need to have real penalties for operating these in our community. And so that's the direction I would like to go, I think we need something on that end. I would even support, and I brought this up this morning to some others, including Councilmember Stratton, some kind of policy that would allow us to freeze building permit until a nuisance complaint has been dealt with. I think something like that, because you're right, if you operate one, you might operate others. But I think the zoning itself is a little bit bigger than a landlord, or bigger than an owner, has bigger ramifications and impacts on the community at large. Future owners could do something with it, so I think it's a little bit different. And so I think if we're going to do something to try and clean up this site, I just don't think the zoning aspect is the right place to do it. I think it would be on the building permit or some other provisions that we could work on, and I would very much support working on something like this. I think going after, you know, landlords that operate buildings that are not up to standard, I think we should pursue those, because they kind of give a bad rap to everybody else. But again, I just think the zoning is a little bit bigger and a little bit different, and not the place where we should try to implement these types of ideas or policies.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Kinnear.
So, this is, this is really a pickle, because Councilmember Stratton, you're not an attorney, but you just gave a very persuasive argument, so thank you for that. I too don't want to make this about the building or the developer, in the same vein as Councilmember Cathcart is talking about, we should be dealing with these issues separately, and not as part of this package of rezoning. And to Councilmember Mumm's point, we absolutely do need transition zones. I would like to go ahead with this change, and knowing that we're going to be working on transition zones in the future, and can, if you look at this map, can certainly make the rest of that block into something less dense, so by the time you hop over to, what is that, Madison, other side of Madison, that's your transition into single-family. I want to support this, because I think it's the destiny of this corridor to be more dense, and I think we can get around the piece about an irresponsible landlord. And I even hate to, I prefer not to know who the developers are, just for this reason, because I think we should be agnostic when it comes to who is providing, who is asking for a zoning change. So I'm very conflicted, you did present a really compelling argument, both Councilmember Mumm and Stratton, and so, and I'm still thinking about it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the issue that Councilmember Stratton was describing is probably in every neighborhood, or many neighborhoods throughout the city. But when you made the comment that it's just been in the last year, I question if some of the eviction moratorium had come into play, or other legal issues that could have provided some constraints on this landlord to get the people who are challenging out of a building. You know, some of our, or if you receive rental assistance, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that could come into play that I'm not aware of, but it is disconcerting. But again, what if this guy, this person sold that land tomorrow, would it make a difference to you if it was owned by somebody else, and they built the same thing? There'd be no ability or no guarantees that the new landowner wouldn't have the same problems as the one next door. So that's my frustration. Where would the accountability piece come in, and who would monitor that to make sure it didn't happen outside of Spokane Police Department and the nuisance ordinance that we have?
I want to ask, and I'm putting you on the spot, Kevin, sure, Freibot, when is the Monroe 2.0 study going to be done? Is that on the work plan?
I do not know. So I see Terrell popped up, and I think she might have some input on that.
Terrell, do you know? We're hoping to start next year, and there's a contract that we just have with Makers to work on that.
Because that might be a deferral we could do until that is done, because, the reason I bring that up is because they could come back with a recommendation that general commercial have a transition zone between it, and it might, we may be jumping the gun a little bit on this, if we're looking at holistically that corridor. So that's just an idea, I mean, I'm happy to make that, that motion to defer until that study is done.
I think that would be acceptable to me. I mean, I, the neighborhood has said to me several times, they don't want to, they're not against this, they just want that time, they want it slowed down, so if there's a fix with the other project, they can see it and they can start having a little more confidence that this is gonna be safe, and it's going to be something that will not destroy the neighborhood.
This is an important intersection to the Monroe corridor, that, we've got historic buildings right here. So I just, so I will make that as a motion to defer until the, I guess I'll call it the Monroe Transition Study. What's the title of that, Terrell?
I don't know that we've given it a formal title, but we're looking at the centers and corridors zoning and the development regulations in this area. So what the outcome will be is not yet determined, so.
I'll just say Monroe Planning Study is completed. I don't know if you want to second that, Councilmember Stratton, for discussion?
I will second that, thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to defer until the Monroe Transition Study is completed. Commentary on the motion. Councilmember Burke.
Yeah, I just don't agree with this, we can't visualize a parcel for the comp plan change based off of someone who owns the property, that's biased, in my opinion, and we can't do that. And, you know, it, this happens in every neighborhood, a multifamily, a multifamily that come in in the neighborhood has a reason to hate it, one reason or another. And that's because we don't want density, because that equals, people think it equals negativity, it equals drug addicts, all these things. And maybe in some parcels, there are people who are addicted to drugs or do cause harm to neighborhoods, and that's just a fact. That does not mean that, you know, certain neighborhoods should be able to say, "We don't want this specific landlord in this specific place," it's unacceptable. And so I just, I think that this, first of all, we've all stated that we really appreciate the Plan Commission's work on this, and we always support what they put forward to us, because we trust that they have put in the work to do it, and they did, and now we're saying it's not good enough. And I just think, this is, this is a year-long process, and we've had a lot of time to talk about it, and we haven't brought it up until now, and I just think, I think that this, yeah, I agree, Councilmember Wilkerson said it, if this person sold the property tomorrow, would we then be voting yes on it? And if so, that's biased against the landlord, and we shouldn't know who owns the property when making these decisions, it's not appropriate.
Other commentary on the motion. Councilmember Mumm.
Yeah, just to be clear, the developer, I'm with you on that, the agnostic piece. In fact, I don't even like the name of the developer on the document. But just as a history, the whole plan for doing the Monroe corridor and the improvement would be followed right up with a housing action plan, kind of a Monroe 2.0. We actually started, and we were very excited, Karen and I have worked a lot with this great neighborhood, to come up with a way to support the corridor without decimating and bleeding into established areas, knocking down historic buildings, that sort of thing, just having a really good plan for this neighborhood. And we were out the door on this, and it got shut down by the administration. This neighborhood got cut off, and then COVID happened, and now finally we're starting it back up. And so that's why I'm just thinking, let's hit a pause, we're going back for this, because we know we need it. And I would just hate for us to go too big with commercial on this, without any transition, there might be a better solution to this lot. And so that's why I'm asking, just because we have a lot of local knowledge with this, it's not about the current situation, the developer for me. Thank you for listening.
And I just want to add, Councilmember Burke, just because I didn't say it, the neighbors were involved in the hearings and, um, they have been in touch with the city regarding these concerns. Um, I, it's very unfortunate that the developer's name was used and I apologize for that. Um, but I, I can tell you that, um, I have a great deal of respect for that individual because that developer was willing to sit down with the neighborhood and talk through some of the issues. So I just want to make it very clear that, um, it was never my intent to have that name out there. Um, this is not about that person, but this is about trying to slow things down a bit. Again, the neighbors do not, um, have a problem with this. They, this is the first time in the last year and a half that I've heard complaints about this building. That building's been there a long time. So I, I think there's just so many things going on right now and the neighbors, the neighborhood has asked just that it be slowed down. So I support the, the amendment.
And I'll just weigh in. I'm going to vote against the deferral and for the amendment. I totally get the frustration of a problem building, um, but I don't see the connection between that and the proposed amendment. And it seems that three quarters of that section of the block are already zoned this way. So it just squares it off. And I look at the map at the other properties and my sense is that Monroe, north and south, for quite a ways, is going to be at least half a block, uh, multifamily or commercial, if not the whole block. Um, and so I, I think, in fact, probably just the opposite, squaring up that block would allow the owner to develop something more interesting because he or she would control that. But I would just prefer to move forward. Um, any other comments on the motion to defer? Okay. Motion to defer. Uh, all those in favor, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay?
Nay.
And I'm a nay. And Councilmember Wilkerson's a nay. And Councilmember Cathcart, you're, I can't see everyone. So are you a nay?
Nay.
And Councilmember Kinnear, are you a yea or a nay?
I was a, an aye.
You were an aye. Okay. So I believe it was three ayes and four nays on the motion to defer. So Councilmember Mum.
Can I just have a point of privilege on a comment?
Yes.
Um, but go ahead and tally.
Okay. So I believe, and just confirming with people, there were three ayes for the motion to defer and four nays. So the motion would fail.
Can I request a roll call on this?
You may. I will just go through the roll calls. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's a nay. Councilmember Burke.
Nay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Nay.
Okay. All right. The nays have it. Um, Councilmember Mum, point of personal privilege. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just in the future, be careful when you're doing geometry in neighborhoods to square up things. If you know there's a single-family home right across now from a general commercial. And so when you're dealing with integration of neighborhoods, single-family home lowest density, general commercial the highest density. It's where you have the most conflict. So always remember, look across the street too and kitty corner because it's important to the people who have made the whole thing. Thank you.
Sure. Great point. All right. We're now back to the proposed amendment. Any further council commentary on the proposed amendment? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Uh, we'll have a roll call on the amendment itself, starting with Councilmember Mum.
Nay.
Councilmember Stratton.
So we're voting on the final ordinance, right? Not the amendment?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's-
Where do you-
It's the ordinance that would adopt the amendment, but yes.
Oh, okay. Yes. Um, so I'm voting no.
Okay. Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's a nay. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. I believe that is five to two. That brings us to another ordinance, proposed amendment. If you'd like to read that, Ms. Fister.
H1D, final reading ordinance, C36-142 relating to application file Z20-208 comp and amending map LU1 land use plan map of the city's comprehensive plan from residential 1020 to residential 15 plus for approximately 1.31 acres located at 1014, 1022, 1028 West Cento Avenue and 1011, 1017, 1023, 1027 West Maxwell Avenue. Parcels 35182.2401 through 35182.2407 and 35182.2409 and amending the zoning map from residential two-family RTF to residential high-density, 55-foot max height, RHD 55. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right. Kevin.
Great. Thank you. Uh, so this one is on, this one's on both West Cento Avenue and West Maxwell Avenue. We're looking at eight parcels, about 1.3 acres. Essentially, this one also is another split with a private application for these two parcels in the Southwest. Uh, this one was expanded at the docketting committee stage way back in February and March of this year. Um, council voted to add the additional, um, six parcels, which essentially makes up the western, uh, portion of this block. We're looking at a proposed land use of R15 plus, that's 15 units per acre or more, and a zoning of RHD. However, RHD is typically 35 feet high. This one is 55 feet high. Uh, staff looked at this and recommended approval based on this, on the criteria. Plan Commission, uh, also, uh, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this one. To show you the map very quickly, we're talking about the portion of the block that is currently land designated for land use of residential 10 to 20. Uh, this would, uh, raise that to residential 15 plus. You'll notice that matches some of this higher-density residential on the east side of Monroe, on the east side of the corridor. So the zoning, uh, would go from residential two-family or duplex zoning. Uh, it would, again, go up to residential high-density with a height limit of 55 feet. Uh, again, matching what you see on the east side of the Monroe corridor in this location. And that's what I've got for that, but I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Any questions for Kevin? All right. Not hearing any. Um, do you have one speaker, Dwight Hume, if you want to hit star three? All right. Welcome back, Dwight. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, uh, don't really have much to add to this. It, uh, was enlarged upon by the docketting committee to include all of the, uh, westerly portion of the block to a consistent land use potential. Um, formally, years ago, before neighborhood planning, it was zoned apartments. Hence, we have some apartments and sprinkling of, uh, uh, multiple tenant, uh, houses as conversions. Uh, this just enables, uh, a much better opportunity for, um, uh, to get hu, housing and walkable residential use, uh, next to the corridor. And, uh, as you can see, it's been unanimously supported by the Planning Commission. And, uh, we just, uh, trust the council will see the same logic and approve it. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And if you go ahead and hit star three, lower your hand. Um, any council commentary on this, uh, proposed amendment? All right. Not hearing any and I don't see anyone. Um, we'll go for a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's a nay. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That's seven to zero. Uh, next ordinance, Ms. Fister.
H1E, final reading ordinance, C36-143 relating to application file Z20-209 comp and amending map LU1 land use plan map of the city's comprehensive plan from residential 1020 to centers and corridors core for approximately 1.9 acres located at 1025 West Spofford Avenue. Parcel 35076.3915 and amending the zoning map from residential two-family RTF to centers and corridors type one district center CC1-DC. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right, Kevin.
All right. So, uh, this one is a, a single parcel at 1025 West Spofford. The entire block is one parcel. So this is the community school, the District 81 property that has been operating as a school for a very long time. Uh, we found, you know, back to the 1890s, there was a school on the site. So it's been a school for a ridiculously long time. Uh, we are looking at just under two acres. The proposed land use for this would be CC Core, which would be consistent with what the corridor has along it in other locations as well. Uh, the, the proposed zoning, you'll see an asterisk here, the applicant's, uh, original request was for a proposed zoning of CC2 district center, which matches other, um, other center type, uh, zoning you see along the Monroe corridor. However, Plan Commission during their deliberations decided that it was probably more appropriate as a, as a centers and corridors type one. You'll recall, type one is more pedestrian oriented. It, it doesn't allow car lots or gas stations or drive-throughs, that kind of thing. Um, so type one is that more pedestrian oriented. Type two is a little more auto-accommodating. So Plan Commission's, uh, recommendation is predicated on it being CC type one. Staff looked at, uh, this from the criteria and found and recommended approval. Plan Commission recommended approval unanimously with that change to CC type one. Uh, looking at the map, it's very similar to the previous one. Uh, it's currently residential 10 to 20 or 10 to 20 units per acre. This time, the proposal would be to go to centers and corridors core area. Uh, the zoning is residential two-family and that, this of course would come up and become part of the, uh, the corridor zoning along Monroe Street CC. Um, here you see it as CC2 DC. Plan Commission's recommendation was CC1 DC. I just wasn't able to get this, this graphic updated in time. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me on this one.
Any questions for Kevin? Just go ahead and volunteer them. All right. Not hearing or seeing any. I don't have anyone signed up, but I just want to make sure that we, if the applicants are on the line, it's the school district, it's, uh, Candace Larson and Greg Forsyth. If for some reason you're on and you didn't make it onto our sign-up, you could hit star three. But I'm thinking not. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Um, then let's hear if there's any council commentary. All right. Hearing and seeing none. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's a nay. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passed the seven to zero. And that brings us to one more ordinance.
H1F, final reading ordinance, C36-144 relating to proposal file Z21-022 comp and amending comprehensive plan map TR5, proposed bike network map in various locations citywide. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right, Kevin.
All right. So the last one, you made it. The last one, the last proposal is an amendment. Uh, now we're in chapter four, transportation of the comprehensive plan. This is map TR5, the same map we looked at last year. Um, Mr. Quinnhurst apologizes that he, he's ill and is not able to be here tonight, but he has been working on this all year. Unfortunately, he couldn't take it over the finish line tonight. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but what we're looking at are 11 amendments to map TR5, which is the bike, the future bike facilities map in chapter four. Um, so it's important to note that these aren't going to be built tomorrow. This is a, this is a map that identifies targeted improvements for the future. Um, so we're looking at a, a series of new neighborhood gate greenways in the city, uh, some changes related to shared-use paths in, in various locations. Those are the blue lines you see on this map. And a couple, um, new bike lane, uh, new bike lane arrangements, one downtown and one on the South Hill. Um, I would, I do want to note on this one, you did receive a comment letter, uh, directly on Sunday from, uh, from a member of the public. Uh, I didn't send it to you myself since she had already sent it to you, but, uh, it is in the record. I wanted to make sure I highlighted that she squeaked one in there right at the end. So, um, other than that, if you want to see any of these, I have, I have detailed maps, but I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Any more questions or comments? We don't have any requested public commentary. So we can go straight to a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's a nay. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And that is the last of the comprehensive plan amendments. We have one more matter before open forum, and that is the continued hearing on the proposed 2022 budget. And several people have signed up to testify. And I'll read their names so you can get ready. Stacy Tanichev, Rabbi Tamar Malino, Nagman Asharazi, Pastor Rick Matters, and Nicolette Occultree and Anwar Peace. And so we'll start with Stacy Tanichev, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right, Stacy, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Stacy Tanichev and I am president of the United Nations Association Spokane Chapter, also known as UNA Spokane. I live in Liberty Lake, but I work in the city of Spokane. And I want to congratulate the city on hiring Jerryl Haynes as its first human rights coordinator this year and on the city council's support for funding three positions in the city of Spokane's 2022 budget. I ask that the city commit to fully staffing and adequately funding the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion in the 2022 budget. The Spokane community and especially those from historically marginalized and underrepresented communities have waited too long for an office to address concerns about discrimination and hate crimes as well as to conduct other things that Dr. Lamb, um, talked about and Curtis Robinson addressed, such as educating the community and city staff on issues of equity and inclusion. And based on the proposal sent to you by Spokane Progress, UNA Spokane, and many other organizations that Dr. Lamb referenced earlier, I ask that you fund six staff positions and provide the adequate funding for such an office to be effective, which based on comparable-sized cities would be a minimum of slightly over $1 million. The city of Spokane, as you know, has much to be proud of, but unfortunately it faces the presence of white nationalist groups and the racist, xenophobic, anti-Semitic, and homophobic hate crimes that these groups carry out, um, as mentioned also by Mr. Robinson earlier. But perhaps harder to pinpoint and address are the unseen ways in which ideas counter to the equality, equity, and inclusion of all people lead to discrimination in housing, employment, and policymaking. And changing laws alone will not change this. In some ways, we're all part of a system that perpetuates this discrimination, but we may not even be aware, um, when it's happening. And this is why training for city staff and for community organizations and the public are necessary to achieve change. Um, this is just one more reason why the city of Spokane needs and deserves an office fully staffed with professionals trained to train others, to work with and take reports from the survivors of hate crimes and discrimination, and to improve the engagement of affected communities and policymaking- of affected communities in policymaking and implementation processes. And UNA Spokane would like to also emphasize that this is, um, that creating such an office, the work they would do would contribute to the Sustainable Development Goals developed at the UN, which are not just for other countries, and they're not just something global, they have to be achieved locally, especially S D G sixteen, which reads, promote peaceful and inclusive societies for sustainable development, provide access to justice for all, and build effective, accountable, and inclusive institutions at all levels. UNA Spokane is hopeful for what an Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion can do to improve the protection and promotion of civil and human rights in our local community, and ask that you provide full funding and staffing for this office so that Spokane can reach its full potential. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy, and if you could hit star three to lower your hand, and I'd like to invite Rabbi Tamar Malino to hit star three to raise your hand. All right, welcome Rabbi, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Rabbi Tamar Malino. I'm the Rabbi of Temple Bechallem in Congregation Emmanuel here in Spokane, and I am here to ask that the city create a fully staffed and adequately funded Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion as envisioned in the community proposal that you heard earlier. As many of you know, our temple building and the Holocaust Memorial outside it were desested with swastikas in February of this year, and it was a traumatic and frightening moment for our community. The red angry swastikas sent a message that at least one person, the perpetrator in the city, wanted all Jewish people to be dead, or at the very least, for us to feel like we don't belong here. And we know he isn't alone in those sentiments, one of our city officials, which has sent an anti-Semitic hate mail just today. In response to the vandalism, though, we received an outpouring of love that outweighed the hate. There were hundreds of messages and statements of support for our community from individuals, organizations, and public figures in our city and beyond, including, including Mayor Woodward and some council members at the time as well. We had flowers dropped off at the door of our building, neighbors stopped by and offered help to clean up, and many people made donations towards our Holocaust Education Fund and towards restoration of the memorial sculpture. Law enforcement responded quickly and efficiently, and local media gave us empathetic coverage. In short, many citizens of this city wanted to send a message that in fact Jews do belong here, and that they wanted us to know that they value inclusion and diversity. We were really moved to tears in many cases and incredibly grateful for all the expressions of support. But there was a question that was asked over and over again, what can we do and how can we make a difference? In our private lives, we can educate ourselves and others, talk to our friends and neighbors, and hope to establish relationships and connections in order to lessen prejudice and bigotry racism and anti-Semitism in our society. But in front of you now is an opportunity to do something very concrete to make a difference, to put your money where your mouth is, as they say. We as a community know you have many priorities, and this isn't the only one, but it will strengthen our tr- city tremendously to have effective tools not just to respond to these shocking expressions of hate when they occur, but to address the root causes of these acts through education, and to do the even harder work, the work of addressing the fundamental inequalities that have been normalized in our society, and to ensure that we respect the civil and human rights of every citizen of Spokane. We want everyone to feel like they belong here. Tonight is actually the second night of Hanukkah, a holiday that celebrates an ancient victory over forces of oppression, an enduring moment of religious freedom, and a miracle of light shining in a time of darkness. I hope we can all come together now to shine light into the darkness. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to invite Nagman Asharazi to hit star three. Welcome Nagman, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you so much, President, uh, Council President Beggs. Um, first of all, may I just say it was so pleasant to hear Stacy and Tamar. Happy Hanukkah to both of you, if you're still on here, and anyone else who celebrates, by the way. Um, I am, my name is Nagman Asharazi. I'm a resident of Spokane since the last ten years, being an immigrant, and I have chosen to make District One my home. And one of the things that I have worked on very, very hard within the community is to, um, work for the last two and a half years on this Office of Civil Rights with everybody else who has been working on this issue. Um, I do want to commend Puyan Lam and Curtis Robinson for a fabulous presentation. Thank you so much for the clarity and for all the hard work depicted by G, GSP and NAACP and MCAS and, uh, Apex Spokane, and so many other organizations that were part and parcel in bringing this to fruition. As you saw, the model itself depicts four different areas that we are trying to address. I know that there was a, of, an Office of Civil Liberties and Rights existing, uh, around two thousand and five, or whatever that was, but it's, it's been an on-again, off-again situation, and what we are wanting to see is an Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion in perpetuity from not just to be approved in the twenty twenty-two budget, but to continue, and to continue regardless of whatever budget you're approving, as an entity that exists and has the right and is doing the work that is needed. You've listened to everybody talking about why it's needed and how it's needed and how much it's needed, and it's time to come through on all of these, um, promises that we've been hearing for a while, um, promises of making Spokane a more welcoming and inclusive city, for instance. This is just but step one. You know, I am, I really would like to congratulate the city on hiring Jerel Haynes because, as the first human rights coordinator, and yes, I really, really do believe Jerel has the means and, and the support and the connections in the community to bring this to fruition, but at the same time, he can't do it alone. We must, to make this event, make this whole, uh, um, venture a success, we need to make sure that we have another three, at least another three positions that we approve of in the budget coming up. We do need this Office of Civil Rights. Spokane is a growing city. We are going to get Afghan refugees who are Muslim, and they are veterans of our war in, our United States war in Afghanistan. These are educated people coming fleeing for their lives, who speak English and who have helped the US troops and the military, and so now is the time that we need to do this and come through with, with the promises and to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Nagman, and if you could hit star three and lower your hand, I'd like to invite Pastor Rick Matters to hit star three. All right, welcome Pastor, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. My name is the Reverend Rick Matters, and I reside in Spokane, where I've lived off and on, uh, since birth, my being born in nineteen fifty. Uh, thank you very much for supporting the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion in the city's twenty twenty-two operating budget. I and many others with whom I serve are very pleased that, uh, Mr. Jerel Haynes has been hired as the Human Rights Coordinator and Officer. Fully funding and staffing the office, um, as envisioned in the community proposal will help Mr. Haynes fulfill his mandate as officer and coordinator, which will in turn help the city fulfill its civic and moral obligations. Being both a white man and an ordained Christian minister affords me many privileges that others, including people of color, uh, different religions, immigrants, uh, lifestyles regularly do not enjoy. Part of my calling as a pastor is to work for racial equity in, um, our local area and beyond. Thank you to all of the community members who worked on the proposal presented by Dr. Lamb and Mr. Robinson, serving on the superintendent's, uh, Superintendent of Spokane Public School Committee on Racial Equity, on the Executive Committee of the NAACP, on the Leadership Team of SCAR, Spokane Community Against Racism, along with several other justice organizations, including my church's beloved community, uh, working group. I hear many, uh, I hear story after story of oppression of indigenous, black, and other marginalized groups, um, being, uh, dehumanized. Uh, what, what, uh, remains invisible to many whites is a relentless reality to many marginalized people. So thank you for supporting and fully funding this office, as I hope and pray you will, and also for the hard work and hard and thorough work of, uh, that got us to this point. It represents, uh, um, a, a significant step to heal the blight in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and if you could hit star three and lower your hand, I'd like to invite Nicolette Ockletree to hit star three. Welcome back, Nicolette, you have up to three minutes.
Oh, thank you. I have a number of concerns with respect to this proposed budget, unidentified funding sources, assumptions about the use of ARP funds, transparency frustrations, including but not limited to the lack of clarity about how the twenty-one million in lost revenue was actually calculated. Um, I, according to the budget, the local and state affordable housing sales tax revenue is projected to bring in over seven million dollars, uh, but according to the budget, all of that is being used for homeless services, zero is being used on affordable housing. We're in affordable, we're in a housing crisis, we need affordable housing. That's why so many people voted for that tax to be used in that way, and it needs to be used in that way. Um, and, uh, let's see, we're off there. Uh, on page sixty-four, it says that zero dollars in twenty twenty was spent on domestic violence prevention, that five hundred dollars was allotted for twenty twenty-one and five hundred dollars, uh, for twenty twenty-two. Um, I wonder how much we've given the police department for equipment and wages to combat domestic violence crimes. I don't know what that number is, but it's a lot of money. And considering how bad domestic violence is here in Spokane, I think we should probably start spending more than zero to five hundred dollars on domestic violence prevention, so perhaps that could be beefed up a little bit. Um, civil rights doesn't show up anywhere in the budget whatsoever. I do see diversity, equity, and inclusion, but it's described as an office within HR for employees, so I don't think that's the same thing that people have been championing this evening. Um, I think budgeting in new jobs like a deputy administrator in the mayor's office before filling the crucial positions elsewhere makes no sense. Um, the two point six million dollars for operating Cannon for one year, uh, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Somebody earlier mentioned that they thought sixty beds were at Cannon, so, uh, let's just assume it's sixty beds. Two point six million dollars for sixty beds for a year works out to, uh, forty-three, over forty-three thousand dollars, uh, per bed per year, it's over a hundred and eighteen dollars a day per bed. I mean, forty-three thousand dollars a year, that's almost as much as, uh, city council salary, and it's way more than the, uh, average salary for somebody making fifteen dollars an hour working full-time. Um, it just, it doesn't make sense to me, and I actually think that Cannon has seventy-two beds, so it'd be a little bit, um, uh, less than that, but it still doesn't make sense to try to solve the problem in this way with that cost. And, uh, so I really think that needs to be looked into. Um, I don't, I don't think I have much time to go into more of these budgetary concerns, but I do hope that, uh, you, uh, consider these comments, and I really echo all the things that everybody else has been saying about the Office of Civil Rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. If you could hit star three and lower your hand, and I'd like to invite Anwar Peace to hit star three, to raise your hand. Welcome to City Council, Anwar, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to support the community proposal on creating a new City of Spokane's Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion within our city government, which should be fully funded and fully staffed. Now's the time for the city of Spokane to show the community that this town stands for the values of equality and inclusion by creating this Office of Civil Rights. This new office would make our city a more just, equitable, and inclusive eastern Washington community, and it's shocking that the second big, biggest city in the state doesn't have an Office of Civil Rights already, and this fact is very telling on who we are as a community. Spokane in our region is known as the Pacific Northwest Little Island version of the American Deep South, and Spokane has gained this reputation due to the fact that this town's long history in the facts of tolerating racial incidents in this community. Some of those incidents involving, involved bombing attempts. Just last year, a new Nazi group used a six-month flyer campaign as a way of intimidating Spokane neighbors, which this campaign cul- this campaign culminated in one group member perpetrating a hate crime against the local synagogue. If Spokane at the time had an Office of Civil Rights, that office could have immediately started an investigation once those first Nazi flyers were put on car windshield. The Office of Civil Rights could have worked with those neighborhoods that were affected by those Nazi flyers and heard those neighbors' safety and security concerns. As well, the city office could have created a citywide educational ad campaign of inclusion highlighting the diversity in our community. After, after the synagogue attack, instead of only having individual city leaders denounce those incidents, the Office of Civil Rights could have issued a press release or had press conferences in order for there to be a clear message from the city of Spokane that hate truly will not be tolerated in this town. Now in this new community proposal that's, that has been brought forth, creating this new Office of Civil Rights, the citizens are urging the city government to finally show the community that our city leaders truly do understand the importance of equity and inclusion by creating the Office, the City of Spokane Office of Civil Rights, Inclusion, and Equity, which this off, office should be fully staffed with at least six staff members, and that, that this is, of this office be fully funded with the resources that it needs, and finally, the Office of Civil Rights should be truly independent from any kind of political interference to do their hard work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar. That brings us to the end of public commentary for the budget hearing. Is there a motion to continue the twenty twenty-two budget hearing until December sixth?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any commentary? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay, any abstentions? All right, the budget hearing is continued till next Monday. That brings us to the end of our legislative session, except for open forum. We have two people signed up to speak, and that's Rick Matters and Nicolette Ockletree. Pastor Matters, if you'd like to hit star three to raise your hand. All right, welcome back, Pastor Matters, you have up to three minutes.
Uh, thank you. I'm just speak briefly because I, uh, understand you're considering whether to fund the resource center, uh, continue funding it, and so I just wanted to, uh, first thank you for the opportunity to speak on this subject, and, uh, also thank you and the city for the vision that established the resource center. I think it's, uh, a worthy vision, and, um...
Pastor, I was just gonna interrupt you, but we did, we funded it earlier today at our consent agenda, so, we did.
Oh, well, hallelujah, and I'll relinquish my time then. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and Nicolette Ockletree, if you want to hit star three. All right, welcome back, Nicolette, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. What a perfect segue to what I wanted to cover today. Um, sometimes I feel as though some controversial items are put on the consent agenda rather than the legislative agenda to avoid having to hear public testimony on those items. There doesn't seem to be any consistent method employed, uh, to determine if something will end up on one or the other. I am of the opinion that public testimony should be allowed on consent agenda items. Every week, millions of dollars of claims and payments are approved that technically no citizen can comment on until after they've been approved, because you can't give testimony on consent agenda items, and you can't give testimony during open forum on anything that appears on the agenda that day or on a posted advanced agenda. Uh, please consider allowing public testimony on consent agenda items, or at the very least, please be transparent about the decision-making process or policy involved in determining whether or not an item gets listed on the consent agenda versus the legislative agenda. And with my last remaining moment... And with my last remaining moments, I know there's only two city council meetings after this left in this year, and in case I don't see it during the next open forums to say so, I just wanted to say how grateful I am for Councilwoman Mum and Councilwoman Burke's work as city council members. They've been fantastic people, and I really appreciate everything that they've done, and they are just truly inspirational women, and they've worked so hard, and I just... I really champed in everything that they've done, and, you know, I'll be sad to see you go, but I really look forward to seeing what you guys do in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And I did want to thank all the council members, and we have a lot of staff people who are helping us here, both the city clerk's office and the director of city council, and we got our TV people, and we've got planning people, and we have a lot of city council staff people who are watching and helping us stay on top of it. This was a long meeting, and I really appreciate everyone's engagement in it, so thanks for that. Next week will not be as long, I promise, and just want to thank everyone for all that you do for the city and for everyone who participated in the meeting. If you take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We're adjourned for tonight.